Okay, today is Tuesday, April 9th, 2019. Call the meeting to order, will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Zarnik.
Here.
Trustee Fechter.
Here.
Trustee Frankie.
Here.
Trustee Listener.
Here.
Trustee Petry.
Here.
Trustee Pragnow.
Here.
Everybody is present today. Next, we move on to the invocation, Pledge of Allegiance. The invocation tonight is from Reverend Mary Ann of the Chinewein Temple here in Elk Grove. Everyone please rise. Reverend, if you would please.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the Board for this opportunity to deliver the invocation for tonight's Board meeting. Spring is finally here, and with it comes renewed energy as we welcome the days filled with warmth and sunshine. Just as we can see the buds on the trees and new growth bursting from the ground, the members of the Board and members of the community also gather here to come together to share new thoughts and ideas and establish strong roots that lay the foundation for our warm home of Elk Grove Village. May we continue to work together and remain humble, respect, and embrace the opinions of those here tonight, and may we all pray for the safety of the members of the armed forces and members of the fire and police departments, those who courageously face the undaunted task of protecting us here in the community and abroad.
Thank you. Flags to my right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Reverend, hang on a second. Thank you for coming again tonight. Frankie, appreciate it. Appreciate how important Chinewein is to the community involved, how you help on so many levels. So we're gonna give you an extra chocolate tonight. Keep that sugar high going to work even harder for you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Have a good night. Thank you. We move on now to the approval of the minutes of March 26th, 2019.
I move that we approve the minutes and dispense with the reading.
Second. Motion by Trustee Petry, a second by Trustee Zarnik. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, let the record show you now it's approval. Mayor's report, several things I'd like to go over tonight if I could. First off, on Friday, March 29th, we had our suburban hair commission meeting here in Elk Grove, met with our experts from JDA discussing the rotation plan coming up. We're not quite ready to propose a formal rotation plan. Waiting to hear FAA responses back from questions, inquiries that we had. They said they'll get back to us very shortly, and once they do, we'll start working together with Lanham and Brown, Chicago Hair Report, and the city itself on a rotation plan. Said before, the big step we got over is the headings, the angle coming up there, play they call them, runways, call headings. But the bottom line is, as folks, I keep wanting you, come 2021, that new northern runway opens up, that's going right down Devon. So be prepared, we're gonna get as much relief as possible, but it's gonna happen. I've been saying that now for a number of years. Also, on today, or yesterday, Monday, April 8th, we had the groundbreaking ceremony at the VFW. That is for the new elevator. Finally, work is starting. We wanna thank Keely Construction, Keely Construction, Keely Construction, many times. They're stepping up. It's gonna happen. It's gonna be done. The work should be done by midsummer at the latest, and we're excited. We can't thank enough. If you see the name Keely, they're the ones that are building all the buildings, the new tech park on Higgins Road. They're excellent company, and they came through big time. So we're finally gonna get that elevator done. I know Katie Weiner's worked hard bringing this forward, and little bumps along the road, Mr. Nickerbacker, but we're past those bumps. It should be smooth sailing, as smooth as the elevator going up and down when it gets finished. So we're excited about that going on. Let's see, a couple other items I want to talk about before I get to a little discussion about events from last week. First off, Maggie, if you would. Everyone knows that Elk Grove, you see them at Board meetings, offer what they call a 6B. A 6B is a tax incentive that we can grant with the Cook County's permission and is used to help vacant buildings, buildings that need dramatic repair, work, upgrading to meet today's needs from older buildings. And what it does is, for a period of 12 years, it lowers the tax rate, the property tax rate on that building, down from, what, 25 to 10? 25% to 10%. And then goes back up to full value, actually even a higher value because the building's been improved. In order to, for the village to grant it, several things occur. One, like I say, it's gotta be a vacant building. Two, it's gotta be a building that needs some significant work. They have to also tell us what the work's gonna be done, what it costs, and we monitor and make sure the work is done and complete. Third thing is, it brings jobs in, a lot of jobs. And that's a good thing for the village, good thing for people, work, the economy, and all the rest. Lot of times, we've, if you notice, over the past couple of years, we've been very much promoting Mammon Corporation and the work they did with older buildings, something like this one, where they redid the facade, they redid the inside, the interior, a lot of work in the parking lot and all of that. That's one way work is done, and they invested hundreds of thousands of dollars to do that in their building. Here is another example how a 6B can be done. Note what it was before, Maggie? That's the new building. They invested $5.4 million, almost 80,000 square feet. One of the big tenants is Pitney Bowes. Everyone's heard of Pitney Bowes. So this is another prime example. This was a tear-down rebuild. Maggie, go back to the old picture? We go from that, Maggie, to that. That is a way a 6B is supposed to work. It's the way it works here in Elk Grove. Because I've had people over time, asked me a lot of times, gee, Mayor, I see you grant another 6B. Gee, you gave another 6B. Here's an example of a tear-down rebuild, 6B. The Mammon Corporation we showed before, that was a rehabilitation of existing building. Either way, it's a huge improvement for this business park and this community. And we get a lot of these, a lot more than people realize, because people wanna be in our business park. So not only are we almost filled, we're now getting more and more buildings of this quality being filled here in Elk Grove. So we're excited about that. The next thing I want to talk about is, over the past, what has it been, 10 years we've been doing this, Maggie, now? I don't know, a number of years. We've been going out there, because people always say, well, gee, you know, Mary, you keep saying your property tax rates are good, which they are. We are the lowest combined property tax rate in all northwest Cook County. We know that. That's put out by the county, can't be disputed. But people say, well, but, you know, this town doesn't have this sticker. Well, we don't have vehicle anymore. But they don't charge for garbage, they don't charge for that. So that's a good point people used to bring up. For the past number of years, we, every year, do a comparison with neighboring towns. It's Elk Grove, I got them here now, Elk Grove, Arlington Heights, Displaying, Schaumburg, Mount Prospect, Palatine, Hoffman Estates, Rolling Meadows, our neighboring towns around us in Cook County. We do a comparison, and the numbers, I mean, give you an example, we look at, and we compare apples for apples. So we take a $300,000 house value in Elk Grove, 300,000, Schaumburg, Rolling Meadows, Displaying, so on, and we look at the property tax there, we look at garbage rates, yard waste sticker rates, animal licenses, vehicle stickers, liquor tax, local fuel tax, water sewer rate, water sewer user fee, water utility tax, stormwater fee, home rail sales tax, food and beverage tax, amusement tax, telecommunication tax, natural gas tax, electric tax, cable television fee. We've put all the stuff that all the towns have fees you're involved in, and we work up the comparisons. We've done it for years, and that shows you the true cost of living in a community. So for example, on vehicle stickers, we figure two cars to a household, which is about average in most suburban communities. We figure up an average use of electricity, how many gallons of water on average a town you, or person uses in a year, and we work all that up, but we apply the same figures to every town. And this is not like I said, first year we've done it, every year we did it. And since we started doing that, I think every year, we've been what we call the most affordable town to be in. So Maggie? So this year again, we worked up all the figures, and you'll see, the bar graph on top gives you a quick view and comparison, the bottom breaks down. Now, we're giving to Tom, we're giving to you and the press, and what we'll put in the newspaper is item by item, line by line, of the costs. But the bottom line is, you take your property, some towns include refuse in the property taxes, ours is a separate bill from waste management, so we combined them up, to be fair, because some towns include in the property taxes. Sales tax, food and beverage taxes, water sewer, stormwater fuse, electricity and gas taxes, cable, phone tax, fuel, amusement, we put them all together, and as you see, once again, Elk Grove is the lowest out there. You can see where we're definitely lowest is go across the property tax line. And as we said all along, but you see, we are the most cost-efficient town out there again, as we've been every year we've done it, and we're very proud of that. We feel we deliver the best services out there, bar none, at the most cost-efficient way out there. And again, I know we've done it before, but we're very proud of it. I'm always shocked, though, when I see my good friends in Schaumburg, which I thought was always the utopia in some people's minds, is actually in fourth place. But, you know, Elk Grove is still the best, and are very proud of that. So will we give this out to the press? So you'll probably see more story on that in the paper, and we'll make sure it's in our next newsletter, so people can see, and it's all there. We'll make sure, Maggie, we put in the full detail one, too, in the press or the paper next time, or newsletter that we put out. So we're excited to be able to show that once again. The numbers are double, triple, quadruple check. Correct, Ms. Trump?
Yes.
So we know they're 100% right. And there's really almost nothing else we can work up in rates, I don't believe, that a town would have. We tried to find out, there's anything unusual stuff, we couldn't. So this pretty much covers everything. And some towns, like for example, we don't have a gasoline tax, we don't have an amusement tax. Schaumburg doesn't charge for electricity or gas. Palatine doesn't have a fuel. So it's, different towns have different things. And the, we don't longer do a vehicle sticker. So that count, we blank in ours, other towns do, some don't. I know Schaumburg doesn't anymore or anything like that. So it's pretty unbuilt, so you'll see all that. But again, there's quite a difference. You look at Rolling Meadows, that's almost $2,000 a year more. Palatine, 700. Even the next closest one, Arlington Heights, is almost, what, $450, $500 more. So there's some significant differences amongst towns. So Maggie, nice job. Christine, nice job putting all that together, appreciate that. So one update there. And the last thing I'd like to talk about tonight is obviously what happened last week. We recently had an election here in Elk Grove, and was gonna just talk real briefly about what happened on that. As we just looked at that chart comparing rates, fees, and all that, and other things here in the village, Elk Grove has never been in better shape than it is right now, especially financially. We're doing very well financially. We've been running surpluses for the past number of years. That money, we told you, over the years, we're reinvesting back into the community, part of our 2025 plan that we're working on. Fire stations, public works facilities, roadways, infrastructure, sewer, water lines, drainage issues, all of that. Matter of fact, on roadways, I think we're doing more roadways this year than we've done in a number of years, more miles and all that. You know, we understand roads, especially like this past winter, there's issues with some. We're trying to stay, most towns are trying to catch up to what we do, we're trying to stay ahead of it as best we can. We know there are areas we gotta work on, and we are, we're staying on top of it. And Trustee Zarnik's on the Capital Improvements Committee now, chair, and the committee recommended to the Board in this year's budget, like I said, is more mileage than we've done in years. We're trying to stay like everyone else. Again, we got those possonic bases, that in tough winters like this, we see the effects of it, and we're slowly starting to replace some of the heavily-used roads that have the possonic bases, rebuilding the whole roads themselves. So we're staying on top of it. I know Kobe's got some ideas on things that we're gonna be implementing in the future. But we're in good shape. We got phenomenal employees, they do a great job, I say second to none by far. I know people recently been talking about the rash of people with painting cars, which we know is unacceptable, everyone knows is unacceptable. There's things going on we cannot discuss publicly. Our police are very good at what they do. If you remember, we had that shooting in less than 24 hours, done. Guy caught, resolved, finished. Postal service, I read before, couldn't believe the kind of work we did, how quick we did it, how well we did it. Same thing on this. We're on top of it, folks, trust me, we're on top of it. Yes. Do people do some goofy things? Yes. We stay on top of it. And I know people say, well, patrol more, patrol more. We have 148 miles of streets in this village. We couldn't literally put a policeman on every mile street, alone, on every foot of street. They do a great job, our policemen. We know what they patrol. All of our cars are GPSed. We know at any given time exactly where a squad car is. We can go back and check exactly where they went during the patrols. Streets are patrolled, folks, but if they go down a street once every eight hours, 10 hours, that's a lot of time, no one's driving down it. It's impossible to have people on it 24/7. Doesn't happen. Same thing with lights. We have a thousand street lights, 2,000 street lights, doesn't stop 'em. Trees block the lights, buildings block lights. There's ways, if someone's crazy enough to do stupid stuff, they're gonna do it, unfortunate folks. Our best thing to do is try to catch 'em, keep your lights on, be vigilant, and the biggest thing I talked about not long ago, lock your cars. Painting won't affect, but thefts do affect. Told you about my son, left his car unlocked, broke it into. His wife's car was locked in driveway, nothing. My other son lives across the street, both his cars locked, nothing. They look for easy targets. So do it. But again, this village is doing very well, but we also know that it's not always gonna be that way. There's good times, there's bad times. If you remember, we're very proud of the fact, during that last recession, everyone calls it the Great Recession, we're about the only town out there, we didn't raise our general property tax during that whole recession. We held the line on it. Only thing we've had an effect over the years is pensions, which are state mandated. This year, we were fortunate, we didn't have to raise the pensions, we're doing well. Again, but we wanna make sure we're prepared when the tough times come. But again, stuff we've done, we got record-length contracts with all of our unions, police, fire, public works. Longest contracts ever, matter of fact, our firemen entered a new contract for five years, a year and a half before the five-year, before the old contract came out. We work well with our people to do well. But again, we wanna be prepared. Big issue discussed during the election was the Bahamas Bowl. Lot of people brought it up, discussed it, looked at it. But as we talked about was, we didn't do the Bahamas Bowl advertising for today, our business park's in great shape, pretty much filled up, but we wanna be solid ground for the future. So when tough times do come, and a business can shop around, they remember Elk Grove Village. They remember who we are. So when someone brings our name to 'em, they've heard of us, and we're prepared for it. I know people wanna make that a big campaign issue, which I thought was great. The ironic thing of all that is, the top four vote-getters in this election all supported our efforts on the Bahamas Bowl in advertising. So I think the public spoke pretty loud and clear their view on what we're doing to promote this community, promote where we're going with this, and that's important. Like I say, it was no accident that those folks were the top four vote-getters, as people looked at things on this. As we talked about before, this is the first time in 22 years we actually had an open seat on our board for an election. I talk to my other mayors all the time, they just can't believe that we could have had that kind of a run here in the village, but we did. But we thanked Jim for all the years of service, what he's done for this community, but as he told you, we all told, his time was time to move on, we had an open seat. And I told people back in August, changes are happening all over in governments, but even on this board. Over the next two, four, six years, you may see a lot, you may see every new face sitting up here. Times are changing. Time for moving on, and it's good that we have people willing to step up and run for office. We had six people running. We haven't had six people run for trustee in a long time, and it's good to see a lot of people wanting to step up and wanna be part of this community. And it's nice that we had that, and I appreciate all of that. I'd like to start off by congratulating Trustee Listener, Trustee Zarnik on the reelection, and sitting in the back there, our former police chief, or soon-to-be trustee Schmidt, on the election thing. The bottom line was, it was a big victory. The margins were big. It was, you know, especially in today, with the mentality, a lot of people in voting and stuff, it was larger than we expected, and I think anybody expected. You know, kind of overwhelming what happened. Doesn't mean the other people running weren't good. Scott Sacks sitting back there, I congratulate him on working so hard for running for office. He reminded me 26 years ago, knocking on doors, meeting people, getting to know 'em. I commend him for that hard work. You know, just commend Nancy and Sam and Steve for the hard work, out there meeting people and all that. And that was good, you need that when you run for office. The big thing is, I think important is, the voters came out, people say, well, only 15% of people voted. That's almost five times as many people voted two years ago. For a local election, that was a pretty good turnout for this village, especially when the mayor election was not involved. But I think the residents spoke pretty loud and clear. One, they like the direction this village is going. Two, they like the fact that there's no council wars going on in this village. I meet with big companies all the time here in the village. Fortune 500 companies looking to locate. They tell me all the time, Mayor, one of the things that draws to your community is you've got a community that can work together. You got a community that knows how to work with businesses, you got a community that knows how to work with its residents, we don't read in the paper, you got battles going on, you got fractions going on. We're business people, Mayor, we're not political people. We wanna put our business somewhere where it can be successful. We don't wanna be dragged into political fights and fighting within a community. We wanna make money, because that's what we're in business for. We need to make money to be successful. We like that in your community. And again, I know a lot of people get upset sometimes, you don't see us screaming up here, wrestling each other, and all that. We get things done. It could be also the reason why we're number one, when you look at our finances compared to the towns, could be why our business park is almost filled, could be why we get things done, because we work together. We can agree, we can disagree, but at the end of the day, we unite and move forward with one voice, one team, one vision. And that, I truly believe, is why we're such a successful community, and we wanna make sure that continues in the future. I think one thing the voters did say loud and clear in this election was, they don't like outside influence. They don't want outsiders coming into our town trying to tell us how to run a town. And I don't think anyone here would disagree with that. We want that. We had a candidate who's pretty much is an outsider, this is a true story, true facts, spent over $100,000, over $100,000, over $100,000 to get elected as a trustee here in Elk Grove Village. They weren't successful, but they had stuff we've never seen before. TV commercials, radio ads, robo-calls. They had paid outsiders, not from the community, knocking on doors for weeks on end. They're not our neighbors, not our friends, not the candidates that did it, outsiders. They were paid to be here for it. Strangers walking around, mailings beyond belief, over 10 mailings. Big buck mailings, too. These aren't cheap pieces out there. And even on Election Day, five to six people at every polling place, again, outsiders paid to be there. Not our neighbors, not our friends talking to you, not the candidates talking to you, outsiders. And what people like the least, I heard this from so many people, Elk Grove people do not like hypocrisy. They don't want someone running for office saying, I want term limits, I want term limits, I want term limits, at the same time the candidate's running for a seventh-term elected position in his union. He's got people robo-calling who's a six-term incumbent telling you to vote for term limits. That's hypocrisy, folks. We don't like that in Elk Grove. If you don't like term, people staying in office too long, vote 'em out. You've got the power of the vote, but don't be hypocritical and one day say, I want term limits, but don't practice what you preach. People don't like that, and they didn't like that in this election. And they let people know that very clearly what they did. In Elk Grove, we like knowing our candidates. We wanna meet 'em. Whether they go to the door and knock on it, or they come to a candidate's forum, or they answer the questions the press puts before 'em. I mean, the press was very nice. They send you the questionnaires and give you five days, two weeks to answer, not they ask them right away, just respond. People in Elk Grove like to know who's running and who's gonna run the government. Thank you. You know why? The most critical thing to people in Elk Grove is, they wanna be able to trust their elected leaders. They may not always agree with them, but they wanna be able to trust them. And they wanna make sure their heart's in the right place. And I think that message was sent very loud, very clearly in this election. Just look where the people finished, and they always answered that question very easily. In closing, I would personally like to thank everyone that took the time, whether they voted early or on Election Day, they came out to vote. I was so happy that people came out and voted and let the voices be heard. And trust me, the people you elected that's sitting up here now, or a new one, future trustee Schmidt comes up here, we won't let you down. You can count on us doing the job you elect us to do, working together as a team, and making sure we do what's right for this community. We're gonna disagree with each other, that's gonna happen. You may not always agree with our decision, but I can guarantee you two things. You're gonna be able to trust us, and you know we have our heart in the right place. So I do thank everyone for coming out, getting involved, whether you put a yard sign up, hand out literature on behalf of one of the candidates, or just by voting, we thank you for that. And I wanna thank the people on Facebook. I wanna thank the people that supported the candidates that were victorious on there, but I more importantly, I more importantly wanna thank the people on Facebook that are detractors. We thank them very much for their efforts, very much. It was well-received in this election. So with that said, we can kinda put this election to bed. It's over. What's gonna happen is this, on March, oh, I'm sorry, May 14th, Trustee Petry will be his last Board meeting. Forty years as a trustee, Jim, so I know we have a lot to talk about on May 14th, so that'll be Trustee Petry's last Board meeting. And then on May 28th, we will be swearing in our newest trustee, besides swearing in two trustees that were reelected again, looking forward to it. And I think the library trustees will be here, too, that we swear in that night, too. Both got reelected. And then we'll continue on as we have in the past, right, Mr. Nickerbacker?
Indeed.
Seems like the village keeps moving along, and we'll continue to do that. So that's what's gonna be happening in the future. We look forward to continuing to work for everybody, and we really look forward to working for Elk Grove, because we do care about it deeply, and wanna make sure it continues to well. So with that said, Mr. Nickerbacker, we'll go on to trustee's report, and we'll start off with trustee Pragnow.
He always looks the other way to throw me off.
And you always fall for it.
I have to admit, yes, I do. Thank you very much. Well, we come to the close of another sister city exchange program. Our students are home from their experience in Termini and Mares in Italy. Our students are home from their experience in Termini and Mares in Italy. Everything went wonderfully, that was our ninth exchange program, and we are happy to know that we're going to be continuing doing that, and probably will start interviewing students in the spring for the next year's trip. Also a reminder that the farmer's market is still going on, the first and third Saturdays of the month, from eight AM to one PM, at Christus Victor Church, which is located on Arlington Heights Road across from the theater. The next one will be this Saturday, no, not this Saturday, the following Saturday, April twentieth, once again, from eight to one PM, at the Christus Victor Church. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Trustee Jeffrey Charles Frankie.
No report.
Boy, he did a nice job. Was he a professional?
I'm practicing for two years.
Huh?
We're going to practice for two years.
Two years, okay. Trustee Feiter.
Last Friday, Chief Walsh and I traveled downtown to the offices of the Consul General of Bulgaria, and we met with him, we presented him with a proclamation signed by the mayor, and we presented him with a copy, a DVD, of a television program we made on Channel Six about our trip to Bulgaria. And we had a really good discussion with him, telling us, telling him about our experiences and how good they were, and talking about some things that we can do in the future to further this relationship that we have set up. And two of the things I know that he's talking about, and we're working on this right now, is he wants to have a Bulgarian group in our parade, and they'd be wearing, if you saw the film last meeting of what the people wear during their festival, they will be wearing outfits like that during the parade, they'll be a lot of fun. And also to set up a display about Bulgarian culture at our library or in our village hall, something like that, we're going to be doing that in the very near future. And we've, you know, established, I think, a very good rapport with him and a good relationship. This Saturday, we were going out to dinner with two of the Bulgarians that were so helpful to us, they were at our last meeting, when we were in Bulgaria, so we're continuing the relationship, and I'm very happy that we're doing so. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Feiter. Trustee Listener.
No report.
Trustee Zarnik.
Oh, I've got a report.
Oh, do you now?
I do. Trustee Listener and I went to Industrial Modern Pattern on March twenty-seventh, Pattern and Mold, really interesting on how they do things for small type of requirements. And on April first, I went to the ribbon cutting for the first year anniversary of the organic vit at six seventy Meacham. It's health foods and cosmetics, very interesting also. And on April seventh, the launch of the new name for Village Point Church on Beisner, went to that reception, it was very, very welcoming, very warm, had a great time there. I also want to mention that there are six one thousand dollar scholarships from the Frank J. Zarnik Memorial, and that's available for Elk Grove Village residents graduating this year from high school. And it consists, can assist you for your endeavors for next year in college. Applications are on zarnikgolf.com and the Elk Grove websites, and they must be received by May third. So please, and also please save the date and join us for the annual Frank Zarnik Scholarship Golf Outing on Friday, August ninth, one PM. This is the only way we raise money for the scholarship program. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Zarnik. Trustee Petry.
I do not have a report, but I would like you to join me at the podium.
Oh, if you would, you've been bad. Now would you do?
Put the hammer down.
Yeah.
The hammer down. This is your life.
This is an opportunity for the senior trustee to congratulate the senior mayor, which just happened. This is Craig B. Johnson, longest-serving mayor of Elk Grove Village, whereas Craig B. Johnson became mayor of Elk Grove Village on April twenty-second, nineteen ninety-seven, and has served in this capacity for a total of twenty-one years, eleven months, and thirteen days. And whereas on April third, twenty nineteen, Craig B. Johnson officially surpassed Charles J. Zedek as the longest-serving mayor in the history of the Village of Elk Grove Village. And whereas Mayor Johnson has overseen numerous infrastructure programs designed to revitalize and reinvest in the future of the community, including the Industrial Commercial Revitalization Commission, which has reinvested more than one hundred million dollars into the Elk Grove Business Park to improve transportation, infrastructure, business retention, and recruitment, and aesthetics. The Residential Enhancement Program, which has invested more than twelve million dollars into residential areas of the community on infrastructure maintenance and aesthetic improvements, including decorative treatments of key intersections, decorative streetlights and street signs, the creation of the memorial park, the construction of the iconic Clock Tower Plaza, and the beautification of public works facilities in residential areas. The Elk Grove Twenty Twenty-Five Long-Term Infrastructure Plan, which calls for an investment of over one hundred and thirty-five million dollars into the community, including major construction on four facilities, road reconstruction and resurfacing, street scraping enhancements, street lighting drainage projects, and bicycle and pedestrian improvements. And whereas during his tenure as mayor, Craig B. Johnson has advocated for the benefit of Elk Grove Village and the region on numerous matters through active involvement on numerous boards and committees, including chairman of the Suburban Air Committee, director of the Illinois State Toll Highway Authority, Governor's Advisory Council on Elgin O'Hare Tollway, I three ninety, Northwest Municipal Conference, Northwest Suburban Municipal Joint Action Water Agency, and Solid Waste Agency of Northern Cook County. Whereas Mayor Johnson has supported the creation of first-class recreational events for residents, including the Election Brothers Tour of Elk Grove, a top professional cycling race held on the streets of the community, and the unity within the community, Midsummer Classic Concerts, a free event which continues to bring premier entertainment to thousands of residents and guests every July on the Village Green. And whereas throughout Mayor Johnson's tenure, Elk Grove Village has been awarded numerous honors and recognitions, including eight statewide Governor's Hometown Awards, Best Hometown by Chicago Magazine and the Daily Herald, Top Fifty Fabulous Places in the United States to Raise a Family, and Top One Hundred Places to Relocate in the United States by Excellence in Economic Development Award by the International Economic Development Council, Top Ten Business Climates in the United States by Global Trade Magazine, National League of Cities Urban Innovation Award, U.S. Conference of Mayors Best Practice National Award for the Residential Enhancement Program, thirty-four, I believe it's now thirty-five, consecutive excellence in financial reporting awards by the International Government Finance Officers Association, thirty-three consecutive Tree City USA Designations by the National Arbor Day Foundation. And whereas Mayor Johnson has been recognized with the U.S. Conference of Mayors Small Business Advocate Award, as well as the Enclave Luminary Leader Award for tenacious and innovative efforts to promote the village as a premier destination for economic development and support the village's business community. And now for, therefore, the Board of Trustees of Village of Elk Grove Village, Counties of Cook and DuPage, Illinois, do hereby congratulate Mayor Craig B. Johnson on his notable achievement, and thank him for the many years of public service and his continued dedication to the exceptional community.
Hanging right next to Stevie Nicks picture, but you don't have it. Jim said I should hang that next to Stevie Nicks' picture. Well, thank you. You've got a really good, powerful reading glass, you have a small print on that one, Jim, that was a lot of reading, thank you. That was, this is not an award for me by any means, this award is a team. We've all been together, I count Jeff, Half, and Bart before that, we've been together as a team during this time, and this would never have happened if we didn't have a team working together, that I talked about before. It takes a team working together, unified, to get things done, and we've proven. These, all these things Jim just mentioned, is not because of Craig Johnson, it's because of Elk Grove Village working together. The board, the residents, the staff, everyone works together, that's what makes us so unique and why we're successful. I appreciate, I accept this on behalf of the village, Jim, and I appreciate you giving it to me, someone I respect the most, and you've been helped to me over the years on the board, and we couldn't have done without your help, too, and everybody else's, so thank you, that's very nice, I appreciate it. Thank you again, thank you, Jim. If something happened in the election I don't know about, you should get this at the end of your term or tenure, so.
I wanted to take the opportunity while I was still here. And I know you always say that when I got elected, you were still in high school, but I don't believe that.
I didn't have the heart to tell you, I was actually in grade school, Jim, but I don't want to go through.
Did you give yourself a chocolate?
No, I didn't get a chocolate, I'll make sure I get one, thank you.
And they're good for you, because they're dark.
My doctor said it's good, my heart surgeon said it's good.
Oh, really? You have a heart?
I do.
Oh, no, he throws it at me all the time.
Actually, I got two surgeons, five doctors, and twelve nurses that prove I have a heart. I found that out the hard way.
Yeah, they play.
Okay, Jim, thank you, that's very, board, thank you very much, I appreciate that.
You're welcome, well deserved.
Appreciate. Anything else, Jim?
No, that's.
Okay, move on now, accounts payable warrant for March thirty-first.
I move that we pay bills and the accounts payable warrant for April ninth, in the amount of two million, two hundred and seventy-three thousand, twenty-five dollars, and sixty-nine cents.
Second. Motion by trustee Petry, second by trustee Zarnik, Lori, can you call the roll, please?
Trustee Feiter?
Yes.
Trustee Frankie?
Aye.
Trustee Listener?
Aye.
Trustee Petry?
Aye.
Trustee Prakno?
Aye.
Trustee Zarnik?
Aye.
Motion passed, six to nothing, Jim, April eighth, two thousand nineteen.
I move that we pay bills and the accounts payable warrant for April ninth, in the amount of four hundred and eleven thousand, six hundred and forty-four dollars, and eighty cents.
Second. We have motion by trustee Petry, I second by trustee Zarnik, without objection, record the vote previously demonstrated, six to nothing. I didn't figure this out, Mr. Nickerbacker. Tonight, we have consent agenda items, A as in? A as in what, Mr. Nickerbacker?
Oh, I was going to say apple, but you always say, how about award?
Award, ooh, okay. Through T as in what?
I wasn't ready for T.
You got it.
Trivial?
Tribute.
Oh, tribute.
Tribute.
I didn't hear. How about more trouble? I was ready for O for ovation, I didn't see the consent agenda, or the addendum.
Trivial?
Tribute. You know I didn't.
Where's the pain when we? Okay, we have A through T, I need a motion.
I move that we accept the consent agenda from A as in award, and T as in tribute.
Very good.
Second.
She saved ya. We have motion by trustee Zarnik, second by trustee Frankie, any questions, comments? Anybody in the audience want to talk about the consent agenda items for right now? Seeing none, hearing none, record the vote as previously demonstrated, six to nothing. Move on now to regular agenda, Mr. Rumel.
Mayor Board of Trustees, we have on your regular agenda this evening a request to install a temporary real estate banner promotion signed for a vacant space at the town center. The town center does require the village board to approve any signage over there, and that's why this request is before you this evening.
Okay. Any questions, comments, concerns? If not, just a voice for all, if you have a motion.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, need a motion?
I'll make a motion.
We have motion by trustee Petry, I second by trustee Listener, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, let the record show and ask approval. And Mr. Nicker, or Mr. Rumel?
The second item pertains to a request from the new Village Point Church, which is replacing the Elk Grove Baptist Church for a new sign package at their church located at eight oh one Beisner Road. I believe the variation request is for sixty-nine square feet of signage, as opposed to our ordinance, which is forty-five square feet of signage. I believe it's pretty much just replacing what exists on the location already.
It's going to take us a while to get used to saying, just be patient with us as we do it, but we're excited about what you're doing. I was actually speaking at your church that day, you were talking about it, and again, I appreciate the opportunity to speak. Any questions, concerns?
Yeah, I think we should just note that we're not replacing the church itself, we're replacing, they're changing the name of the church. It's the same wonderful church that it always has been.
And same pastor?
Right.
Very good. I need a motion, is that moved?
Second.
We have motion by trustee Zarnik, second by trustee Frankie, without objection, record the vote previously demonstrated, six to nothing. You're good to go. Congratulations, good luck in everything. And please bear in mind, when I say Baptist, I apologize in advance. I made a mistake naming my two daughters started the same name, letter M, and I call Megan Michelle, Michelle Megan, I've done that for twenty-five, thirty years, so I apologize in advance, I know it's going to happen. But good luck, Chair, it's exciting what you're doing, and we appreciate you being still a big part of the community and what you're doing, we wish you well. Thank you. Anything else on the regular?
No, that concludes the regular agenda.
Plan Commission, Mr. Rumel?
We do have a couple of items for consideration under the Plan Commission this evening. The first is a very interesting proposal from CA Industrial to redevelop the Devon Tani Market, which had been a retail space in Elk Grove Village for many, many years, and with current events with Amazon and online shopping, is now going away of light industrial. CA Industrial would like to redevelop the space into a one hundred forty-six thousand square foot light industrial facility, and maintain all of the existing food restaurant businesses as a?
Of most.
Most of them, as a retail use on that site.
Just for people watching, I know there's a hearing for the Plan Commission, they did the thorough jobs they always do. Remember, that place has been, it's always been being chopped by pieces over time. It used to be real big, as a kid, I remember, you used to have a drugstore up there, was that suburban drug?
Yep.
Cindros.
Cindros.
And there was?
Roger Maple.
Yeah, Roger Maple.
A P was the original.
Yes, there was a grocery store there, too.
And there was a hardware.
When we were younger. And it's been slowly being chopped off, parts, 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 as time goes on. And what's going to happen is, and we're going to see more of this along Devon, you look across the street at Wooddale, at the corner of Ridge and Devon, they got a huge building that type across the street, and more of that's occurring along, especially Devon, as it becomes more heavily used with the Elgin O'Hare being built, and soon the four ninety being built, Devon has become more of a tieral street for businesses. The beauty we have of that location is, we have a nice natural buffer with the common power lines that gives us over two hundred feet of open space between the back of homes and where developments are happening. All of it's not going to be like this type of use, we're in discussion with our piece of land at Ridge and Devon, that the village owns, which is a potential retailer coming in there, down the ways a little bit more, potential retail, but also still may, other type of use, light industrial further down toward the creek area. So the good thing on this development was a couple of things. One, that restaurant area needs a shot of adrenaline, it needs an upgrade to its look. The facade needs to be done. I know that hurts business form, because people driving by that don't know the area, it's not as appealing as it should be. The new look, when this development gets done, is going to be very appealing, very high-end, very good for the businesses. I know, we'll try and keep as many of those restaurants there that we can. Trust me, the developer originally wanted to get rid of all of them. We were the ones, it's bo- We were the ones, this board was insisting that we keep those restaurants in there as possible. If not all of them, close to all of them. I know, I think Tata's, excuse me, Tata's looking to double their size than what they have now. I know Fat Mustard's staying, Subway's staying, so they're working to keep them all in there filled up. That's gonna be good for them, good for the parking lot. Second thing is, one thing the village needs, is the village needs an alternative exit at certain times instead of just going on Devon with the new public works facility. By this development coming, it gives the village the ability to have an exit on the side, the east side, to go behind the development out on Tani Road. Does it happen a lot? No. But Kobe will tell you, depending on what time of day, rush hour, snow, whatever, there are times we need to have that alternative location to exit. This will provide that. With that in mind, and the fact that there might be some trucks going that way, there's one, a sawbear wall continuing on from what we have behind the public works for a period of length. Landscaping, so you're gonna have that to give even more protection to the homes further down, you know, along Maple there, Maple Walnut. Maple. Walnut? Walnut. So, we're gonna make sure that. And what's nice is, there's gonna be more parking available for the use of the park that's there. That's a benefit. Secondly, they're gonna continue the trail, the bike, or the bike path with the park district in there that they're gonna pay for. So, that's a benefit to the area. So, this truly can be a win-win. It's not gonna be heavy industrial. We actually reduced the amount of docks per square foot that a lot of times is granted. A lot of times you get one dock for maybe 5,000 square feet. This is one dock for eighty, what's that, about eight, 8,500? About eight, 8,500. So, almost half the number of docks normally given. That helped keep the use down somewhat. The height of the building is similar to what we have at the new public works facility. The salt storage dome, I think, is about the same height. So, that's similar, and that's in the back of our property close to the homes. It's not atrocious to the people by any means. The looks of the building is gonna be extremely high-end. Windows, brickwork, facade improvements. It's gonna look very nice, very conducive area, actually gonna be an upgrade appearance-wise to what existed on this quarter as we speak now. Kinda like we did with the public works facility. That looks gorgeous when you go by and look at that. Same thing on this facility. And we appreciate the work the developer's doing for us. We thank him very much for that. You know, it took us a little while to come to agreement on everything, but we did. And the developer worked very nicely with us to make sure there's a first-class development here in Elk Grove. As we talked about earlier, we only expect the best here in Elk Grove, and we're getting that. So, that is occurring, and I think from the feedback we got from plant commission members and the few residents that did show up at the thing, I think they're all pleasantly surprised by the look of it, the appearance. We're saving the restaurants. It's gonna be a better development all along there. So, it's really gonna be an improvement. Mr. Rumel, there's a couple of items they had to make sure they addressed?
There are a number of legal steps that would need to be taken in order to allow the development to take place, and there are a couple of conditions. One is, we need to have the sign-off of all the utility companies for the 12-foot wall to be erected.
That should just be a mere formality.
That should be-
We have not heard from a utility company say they wouldn't do it.
Exactly.
And they usually don't deny that.
And then we're looking for an extension of the bicycle pedestrian path from Walnut through the commed property and back over to the park area, and we're looking for a shared parking agreement with the park district for the utilization of the petitioner's property for the park. It's appropriate, I would suggest that the village board have a motion to authorize the village attorney to prepare the necessary documents for adoption at the next board meeting.
The petitioner is here. Any questions from board members tonight? Any concerns? Again, I want to compliment the plant commission. They did a fine job, a good hearing. Mr. Glass? I think Jim, was he chairman when you started? John Glass?
Uh, no.
You started after you started?
Bill Shannon.
Oh, Bill Shannon? Oh, my gosh. So, but John's done a long time. I think, you know, our chairman does a good job. He knows stuff. Our plant commissioners are good at what they do, too. Again, we want to thank your investment in the community. We appreciate that, and working with the community very much so. And Matt, you did a nice job. I know, worked on this for a while, but it came through very nicely. So, we're excited about that. Okay, with that said, being said, I need a motion to have the attorney prepare the necessary documents. So-
Second.
We have motion by trustee Listener, second by trustee Zarnik. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, let the record show and ask approval. You do not need to return. This will be, it'll be a mere formality. Two weeks from tonight, it'll be on the consent agenda. Be open, we want it to be open for discussion. It's already been 7-1 majority on the plant commission, six to nothing tonight on the board, so you don't need to return. You can start working as soon as you get all the finalized whatever stuff. For some reason, you guys get energy and stuff tomorrow. Just work with Mary Jo's department, get the permits. You're welcome to do so. I don't want it to happen that fast. But I cannot thank you again enough for working with us, for partnering with us. It's gonna be a big shot in the arm for those restaurants that are there. That's gonna help immensely. Your development's gonna be a benefit, one for business, and two, aesthetically it's gonna look great, and three, it's gonna help out that park area that's right there also. So, I thank you again very much for choosing Elk Grove. You got a lot of places you can go to, but you chose Elk Grove, and we appreciate that very much.
I just want to say too, I really want to thank your staff. They did a great job. Everybody that's here, you know, as far as, we met with them, we went through the stuff we needed. Everybody moved in a great unit, and we know, I was not sure we could even get to where we are today, how, at the speed we had to get there. They did a phenomenal job, so I want to thank them for, you know, giving us all the information we needed and hitting the timeline. So, they were great work. And they're good peoples. That makes a lot of sense, so.
Thank you. Don't say too much because they come up with their views, and I don't wanna, I don't wanna give them too much of a benefit there, but- But no, they are, they are why this village does so well. We just implement policy. If they didn't enforce it and get it going, we wouldn't be as successful we are. So, thank you very much. Okay, with that said, anything else on the plant commission, Mr. Rumel?
We do have one more item under the plant commission that pertains to some property at 2710 United Lane and 2401 Pan Am Boulevard. GPL Investment Group runs an existing business. They bought a vacant lot next door to their existing business. The vacant lot wasn't large enough to build on, so they took a little property from their existing business, gave it to the vacant lot, and they plan on building another building to expand in Elk Grove Village on that vacant lot. To do that, they need a new subdivision, a re-subdivision of the two lots, and the plant commission did review that request and recommended unanimously that the village board approve it. And again, if it meets village board's requirements, motion to have the village attorney prepare the necessary documents would be in order.
The petitioner need to be here for that?
I don't know if we requested to share the hearing.
Okay.
No, we did.
Okay, that's fine. Any questions, comments from the board?
No.
I need a motion to have the attorney prepare the necessary documents?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Zarnik, second by trustee Frankie. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Let the record show and ask approval. Okay, nothing on the zoning board of appeals. Move on now, youth committee. Trustee Jeffrey Charles Frankie.
We are getting down to the line for the youth scholarships from the youth committee. We have seven $1,000 scholarships to give away. You have to have it in by May 3rd, Friday, May 3rd. That's the last day. It's the cutoff, so don't hesitate. Get the forms in as quickly as you can, and we'll pick the winner by May 31st. And we will notify you right after that. But we have to thank Microphone Brewery for the extra $4,000 that they've donated. They donated $17,000 to us after our fundraiser last year. So, we thank them for being part of the community and helping our kids go to college. So, get these forms in and get yourself $1,000. That's it.
And this year, Microphone's doing an event on April 27th, and the Character Coalition gets a benefit this year, so that's good news.
They have been partners with us.
Yep, very good. Thank you, trustee Frankie. Move on now, business leaders forum. Trustee Petry.
I'm deferring to my associate, my co-chair.
Thank you, trustee Petry. Trustees Zarnik mentioned earlier that we visited a company a couple of weeks ago, Industrial Modern Pattern and Mold. And tomorrow, we're visiting another company. This is really a sweet deal.
Yes, see why? Go ahead.
Tomorrow, we're visiting Dumec Incorporated. They began their existence in 1921, and they moved into Elk Grove in 2003. This company makes one product, marshmallows. And they, they make all kinds of marshmallows, so we're very interested to visit their facility and give them our advice on their product. But we're, we're pleased every time we go out, we find something new in Elk Grove that we didn't know about. So, we're hopeful to visit all of them in the next few years, so.
All 3,600?
Well, maybe more by then. But anyway, that, that's, we're looking forward to tomorrow's, but.
I haven't seen you call the oldest business in Elk Grove.
I've been there.
Very good. Anything further?
No, that concludes trustee Petry's report.
Okay, cable television committee, trustee Listener.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Times are getting interesting with cable television. On, we had a meeting on April 3rd. It was attended by our village manager, Ray Rumel, Ross Rowe, and of course trustee Petry, who we wouldn't want to go to a meeting without. We're talking about the franchise agreement being renewed with Comcast, but as usual, some of the other government bodies is making it difficult. We have the new federal, new federal regulations from the FCC, plus the state of Illinois has their laws on franchises, so it's, it's gonna take more talk than I was hoping for. But our main goals are keeping Channel 6, providing an HD channel for Channel 6, and there's other things we're looking at. Our next meeting is, is scheduled for May 1st, I believe. May 1st, also in Pelotine. But we're, the committee, after we hear that report, we may have to bring in a consultant because this, this whole area's gotten so complicated, we may have to get some outside advice. So, we'll keep you posted, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Health and Community Services, trustee Zarnik.
Thank you. The blood drive that was held Saturday, April 6th, brought in 46 donors. The goal was 36, so you can see that was a great success. At least eight of those donors were firefighters who signed up in honor of the fire department's Lieutenant Joe McGurney, whose father passed away several years ago after receiving a lot of donated blood himself. Thank you to all who participated, and our next scheduled blood drive is July 27th, so mark your calendars.
Can I add something to that?
Sure. Trustees Zarn, or Prochnow?
My daughter donated for the first time.
Oh, wonderful.
In my honor, because I'm not able to donate anymore.
So, we, she took-
And she sent me a picture of her sticker, and she was very excited about it. So, hopefully, we're gonna get some younger people now getting involved with the donating process, so.
That is so good to hear.
I was so proud of her.
You should be.
Yeah.
Thank her for us.
I will.
Okay, thank you. Information Committee, trustee Listener.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. A couple of items. One, I believe at the last meeting we spoke, we reminded people about the large branch pickup coming up in the next couple of weeks. The east, the east of Route 53 pickup is the week of April 15th to the 19th, and west of Route 53 is April 22nd to the 26th. If you need branches picked up, you could fill out a form on our, apply on the website, or call Public Works at 847-734-8800, and you have to get your request in by the Friday before the, that week's pickup. The other item I, I think I touched on last week, that we now have a system on our website where you can report a coyote sighting, which we hope there aren't too many, but this time of year there probably will be quite a few. But I wanted to mention that beside the website, Maggie had our app, EGV app updated, and now you could use your Elk Grove app to report a sighting, which is nice if you're out walking around and you happen to, to see one. And that's, of course, to protect our pets and, of course, any young children and anything else if once you go bad. The last item is, I'd like to schedule a meeting of the Information Committee. One of the items in, in the questionnaires from the newspapers was, name something you wanted to bring up that hasn't been discussed, and the item I brought up was having, well, we have a citizens' police academy, and we have a citizens' fire academy, and they're both wonderful things. They're always bought totally. I suggest that we start, I don't have the name down pat yet, but I'm calling it a citizens' administrative- Academy? Yeah, for lack of better words. Anyway, we're hopeful to draw more people's attention to the plant commission, the zoning board, and other functions in Elk Grove, even the board itself. So, I wanted to discuss it with the full committee, which is made up of trustee Feiter and trustee Prochnow, and of course, Ray's staff. I'm not sure who he went there, but I'd like to schedule the meeting for Tuesday, April 23rd at 2:00 PM.
No.
No?
It's my birthday.
Oh, it's your birthday? Well, kill that idea.
It's a board meeting anyway.
There's priorities, okay?
Yeah.
Don't we have a board meeting that day?
Yeah.
Well, I'll try and make it for the board meeting.
Well, we were gonna bring a cake, but that, that's off. I'll come up with another date and announce it at the next meeting. And that concludes my report.
It's a celebration. Shouldn't everybody celebrate their day of birth?
I agree. I agree.
With information.
The greatest gift of all.
No, I'm-
Is that it?
I'm sliding out of this one as quick as I can.
Kobe, lead pickup went good, didn't it?
Yes, sir.
No problem. I saw a lot of piles out there, so that was a good call. You know, they have my, was it? My thought is this, is this something we may want to try doing every year? Was it that big a problem?
I, I, I don't know. You know, we, we got stuck this year because of the early snow.
I understand that, but-
So, that, that's kind of what hampered our, our situation this last fall, and it kind of required us to do this. So, I don't know.
Was it difficult?
I mean, it took, you know, it took a couple of crews, two weeks or, you know, full week to get it done, so.
Well, my only thought was, every year, people have like willow trees, some of the maple trees, oak, they drop the leaves so late. We can't, one of the complaints people have was, you know, why can't you pick up leaves later, later? I know we have drop-off, we do that. But my thought was, if that works pretty good, wasn't that bad, we may want to consider that each year because that did help a lot of people. I mean, I saw some people had some nice-sized piles out in front of the houses. Can you check into that and maybe get a report back to the board on that?
Sure, absolutely. We're looking at it.
It was very well received. People liked it.
The thing is, is we'll have to let people know that we're not gonna, don't pile them on Parkway, leave them all winter.
No, right.
Where it's killing the Parkway grass, you know, keep them, you rake them up, keep them in a garbage can or something.
Well, rake them up at the end, rake them up in the spring.
Yeah.
Leaves, leaves won't kill your grass unless it's real thick.
Well, like the piles that-
Yeah. Leaves spread naturally over your yard, then in the spring, you could rake it up, put it out. I mean, I'll tell you, I can't believe, I mean, people had, and every year, people do complain that we stop so early because they can't-
Some of them don't even fall off until they bud new buds, so.
So, that's what my thought is. Check and see how feasible that might be. Just a one-time, like we did this time. But I'm telling you this, I had at least a half a dozen, that's a lot of calls. Half a dozen calls from people thanking us for doing it and made a big difference for them. And if it's something we can do without that much disruption, we may want to think about it because it was very well received. And you guys did a great job. Everyone said, boy, you had the vacuum out there, and they said they did a great job cleaning up. Are there street sweepers now going and, good, okay. Check into it. We got time. It's only April, so got time to think about it. Thank you. Recycling Waste Committee, trustee Feiter.
June 1st, we are going to have another recycling event for paper and electronics at the Petri Public Works Facility between 9:00 and noon. And then, June 8th, we'll have another recycling activity at the Petri Public Works Facility between 9:00 and noon, and that'll be for paint and motor oil. And I'll have more details as we get closer to it. But put, write, circle those dates because people really like to come to those, and they are a big benefit to the village. And that concludes my report.
And thank you. Parade Committee, trustee Zarnik.
Thank you. The applications are coming in for the parade, and that is Saturday, September 21st, and that's in conjunction with Elk Grove's Oktoberfest. So, please join us and get your application in so we can make sure everyone is included. Also, remember that the Elk Grove Food Pantry will be collecting food items along the parade route. Consider bringing an item or two that you would like to throw in their carts as they go along the route. Our grand marshal for the parade is Kitty Weiner, who was very instrumental in getting the VFW elevator fund started. Now that we broke ground on that, it's coming to- Now that we broke ground on that, it's coming to completion or will be, and so we are again be honoring Kitty at the parade this year. And we're also happy to acknowledge those who make the parade successful are sponsors. So far, ANH Plumbing and Heating Company Incorporated, Atlas Holding, Chicago Offset, Crosstown Electric Incorporated, Dars Holding Group, L., Limited, Elk Grove Chamber of Tom Commerce, Grove Memorial Chapel, Jerry Castle and Son High Lift Incorporated, and the Sign Center. I thank them for their support. Our next meeting for the parade committee will be Monday, May sixth, at five-thirty P.M. Room E of the Zetic Municipal Building, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Zarnik. Personnel committee, trustee Jeffrey Charles Frankie.
No report.
JPC committee, trustee Prakno.
Thank you. Uh, we had a meeting of the JPC committee on Monday, April first, at nine A.M. Uh, the, the issue that was discussed was a resident who had called and inquired about the parking restrictions in the industrial park. Uh, for several years, we've had the same parking restrictions, which is parking from seven A.M. to seven P.M. on the street, and the resident, um, is also a business owner in the industrial park and was questioning why we had such early hours for no more parking on the streets as businesses have evolved in the park and some are staying open later. So we had a meeting to discuss it, and, um, we had police representation and village staff, and, um, came up with a lot of, a lot more questions than we thought that we were going to come up with. So we decided to, uh, have staff do some investigating and investigate four issues to identify retail operations in the business park that might operate past seven P.M., to provide a cost estimate to replace and update parking signs throughout the business park if we should, should choose to change those hours, to identify how many of the overnight parking violations in the business park have occurred between seven P.M. and ten P.M., and finally, to conduct a light study to identify whether evening parking on the street would present a possible hazard in the business park. So staff is going to take a little time to investigate those different, um, items, and we will probably be meeting in about three to four weeks, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Uh, capital improvements committee, trustee Zarnik.
Well, construction season is beginning, and our construction on residential, uh, roads will begin in June and could, should be completed by the end of August, and the business streets will begin in April and completed by the end of May. Uh, I'm sure you've all received your newsletter, and so you can always refer to it for information on the twenty-nineteen street maintenance program and on the village's private participation replacement program. And that concludes my report.
Okay, airport update that we already discussed. Mr. Knickerbocker, Mr. Payne had no idea of our bands. Hmm. I said, boy, I thought someone would know. Our other turn doesn't know either, I told them.
That's not true.
Oh, okay, let's find out. Okay, our last concert is who?
The last concert?
The last concert.
You're switching around, aren't you?
Of course.
Night Ranger?
Very good. Our third concert?
Uh, the Commodores.
Yeah.
I'm impressed.
You weren't sure about them?
No, no. I was impressed. I'm sitting, thinking you're writing something down.
No, or he was going to say fourth, because there's five, right?
Yeah, the third one. The fourth one...
Right, right. I'm just saying, you would have thought he would have went to the fourth one, because the way you just...
Oh, no, I jumped out.
Don't even try and figure it out.
I jumped out. The fourth one.
No, 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 he was sneaky.
I'm listening to you.
Yeah, I don't worry about it. The fourth one.
Winona? And the big, um, noise.
Very good. First one?
Melissa Etheridge.
Very good. And our second one?
Lost Gags.
Very good. Mr. Knickerbocker, I'm impressed.
Well, I have tried to make it up after the trivia come.
Yeah. I was making sure, I was making sure he wasn't giving you signs over there, so I was looking for...
I gave him...
Very good, so, think about it. That's only three, less than three months away when we start in the concerts.
Yes, indeed.
Looking forward to a great year.
Part of the things that you got your reward for, your concerts.
Exactly. Concert series, yes, very good. Uh, special funds committee, that's only now a little over a month away. Memorial Day celebration, ten forty-five, inside the pavilion in the gym. Rain or shine, hot or cold. Very good. Uh, no answer to the liquor commission? Report from village manager.
Hi, in honor of Paul Petzel, who I see in the audience this evening, I just want to report that everything is excellent for a Tuesday.
Ah. Mr. Petzel, I know you've got copyrights, trademarks to that scene. Do you want me to have our attorney sue him?
No, just see my hair.
Oh. Very good, Mr. Petzel. Very good. You want to be a trustee? We may have an opening when Jim steps down. Oh, I'm sorry.
I think that spilled.
Uh, uh, village clerk?
No report.
How many voters? I know, I was even know. How many early voters?
How many early voting voters? That was, oh, man.
I know.
I slipped it. It was... I don't know if I have it here, but I want to say it was like...
One thousand?
One thousand.
Four hundred and ten.
Yes.
Something like that, right?
Yes, that was it. Sorry, I moved on to the next page, the election.
It was excellent. And by the way, boy, they were very happy. They liked our setup. They loved the pictures of all the concerts. They said more people came in to vote, was looking at those, people were stuck around looking at the pictures after they got done voting. They says, okay, we looked for a minute. So you did a very nice job. They're very happy, very grateful, and, uh, for someone that spent a lot of time out there, it's amazing how people come by and vote and take advantage of that opportunity, so good job. Make sure we get it for the next election, be primary a year from now. Yep. So, thank you. Uh... Any unfinished business, Mr. Knickerbocker?
I don't think so.
No, there's nothing on there as usual.
Thank you.
Um, any new business items from trustees tonight? Nope? Okay, um, public comment? Any public comment tonight? No? Yes?
I want to say, I turned on the government channel for ninety-nine today. It was impressive. Elk Grove Village, the list of the elections, the count, the board, the, you know, all kind of meetings, uh, the coyote thing, it, it really impressed me, this kind of thing. It had some like, it said color, full screen, it was great.
We don't get that on Channel Six, do we? You know, when you meet, no, gee, if you get a chance, well, do you any of you guys have AT&T? No? You're AT&T, right?
Yes.
We should try, see what that is. If we can't see what's on there, they give a lot of background information that we don't get on Channel Six. We might be able to put that as part of something, we can get a new franchise agreement.
You know, the police carry in, the meetings they had, all the people? I couldn't get all the stuff that was on there.
Wait a minute, how is it separate then from Channel Six?
They get different information, we get them.
Was it a show, or was it...
I don't know, I just, before we left, like six-ten or something, I turned on channel ninety-nine, government channel, Elk Grove Village, came on, you went full screen, pressed the button, and I got a full screen, beautiful color, full screen, and it listed all this stuff.
But our normal programming that you...
I don't know, I, I don't do it real often, but, uh, it was great today.
Well, what we'll do is we'll check it out.
Yeah.
And see what's going on.
We weren't allowed to have AT&T, remember?
But we'll check on it. And again, anything particularly you want me to talk about when I come see you in two weeks?
Tell us it's great, it's really good.
Okay, just my usual?
You know, I voted early, too, and it was really great. There was no line, got in and out, and nothing flat.
Oh, it was good. Thank you. Okay, um, anybody else? Ma'am, I know we're going to get back in touch with you. We'll make sure we get all the information to you. No problem. Glad to do it. Thanks for coming by tonight.
Thank you for having me.
Appreciate it. Okay, and there's nothing further? I thought it was going to be a quick meeting and...
Yeah, well, yeah, go figure.
Sure. Sure you did. I'm sure that problem, maybe...
Poor Jim needed Evelyn Woods speed reading to go through that. Is Evelyn Woods speed, does that still exist? Am I dating myself?
No. Speed read?
Yeah, Evelyn Woods, remember Evelyn Woods speed reading?
Yeah, I remember. You read like every fifth word.
Look, I read every page.
I read every fifth book.
Okay, I need a motion to adjourn?
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Zarnik, a second by trustee Fighter. Lloyd, call the row, please.
Trustee Frankie?
Aye.
Trustee Listener?
Aye.
Trustee Petry?
Aye.
Trustee Prakno?
Aye.
Trustee Zarnik?
Aye.
Trustee Fighter?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn passes. Folks, we'll see you in two weeks after Easter, so everyone have a real good Easter holiday, and meeting is adjourned.